Okay, it is 7:02 PM, Thursday, August 13th, 2020. I'll call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. We are meeting via Zoom and the meeting is being recorded. I will, I will start with a roll call and what I'll do is I'll go around to the Planning Board members and they can just respond. Marty?
Yay.
Tom?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yeah.
Jens?
Here.
Susan?
Yeah.
Roger?
Yeah.
This is Rich Ganong, I'm the Planning Board Chair. Ted Redway, the Town Planner, is on with us. We have before us this evening the approval of the agenda. On the agenda, we have the minutes of July 23rd, July 30th, and August 6th. We then have a section for public comment, which is open to people that are that are not talking about anything that is on the agenda this evening, but may have a concern that they want to bring to the Planning Board. We have three pending applications, 35 DMR Drive, a Plenary Site Plan Review. We have the Wellness Center, a Plenary Site Plan Review, a Determination of Completeness. Item number three is Pave Tech, Major Conditional Use Application, Determination of Completeness. Number four is Land Use Ordinances. We have a discussion to, to establish uniform construction and dimensional standards for commercial driveways. And then we will have other business, if there is any, for the Planning Board to look at, and then we'll stop and go home. Well, we won't go home, but we'll stop.
I'll make a motion we approve as written, as read.
Okay.
Tom made a motion, Roger seconded. Is there any discussion by the Planning Board? Hearing none, seeing none. Marty?
Hey.
Tom?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jens?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
It is unanimous. So the first item on the agenda is the minute, approval of the minutes for July 23rd.
July 23rd?
July 23rd.
Okay, okay, that must have been an earlier.
I review the minutes, I'd move to approve them as, as written.
Second.
Jens made the motion, Roger seconded. Any discussion?
Are we allowed to public comment at this point, Rich?
No, this is just for approval of, of prior minutes that, that had taken place.
Okay, I, I have a question about the way that they're written, but we'll, I will hold it until we get there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Marty?
Yay.
Tom?
I wasn't there, so abstain.
Okay. Jamie?
Believe I'm in the same boat, is that correct?
No. Yes. No, you weren't. He was there? Yeah. That was, we, that's where we had Raymond Akers, that's where we approved Raymond Akers. Weren't you there for Jamie, that Jamie?
I don't think I was, so I'll abstain for right now.
Okay. Jens?
Yeah, we're talking about the 23rd, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
That is five in favor, one, two, three, yeah, five in favor, two abstentions. Okay, July 30th.
So I've read these two and I approve, I move that we approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, made by Susan, seconded by Jens. Any discussion? Hearing none. Marty?
Aye.
Tom, were you there?
I wasn't abstain.
Jamie?
I was, aye.
Jens?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
It is six, six ayes, one abstention. And then August 6th.
I read those as well and they're, they're accurate, so I'm going to move that we approve them as written.
Second.
Susan made the motion, Marty seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor. Marty?
Aye.
Tom, were you there?
Oh, no, I missed a whole bunch, so abstain.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jens?
I abstain.
Roger?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Okay, five in favor, two abstentions. Okay, public comment. Here you go, Stacy.
All right, I'm up. I would like to refer the group to the meeting minutes of the 7:23 meeting to the pave tech section, which is item two. And I'll read, so bear with me. So it's proposal to construct a 1,196 square foot garage to store construction equipment, blah, 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 blah. At that meeting, Mr. Stifson explained that the site plan that had been provided to the board was submitted upon the recommendation of the planner and he just learned it contained all of the same information related to his unsuccessful 2018 application for a contractor two yard. He was only applying for a pole barn. The applicant's engineer, Jason, also explained that there was a communication issue between himself and his client and he was responsible for the error. He would remove all of the information superfluous to the current pole barn application. The motion, Jamie made the motion to table the application until the applicant resubmitted the plan corrections. Mr. Moore in seconds. The discussion, the chair stated that if the applicant could submit the corrections to the planner by July 30th, the application would be heard today at the August 13th meeting. Unanimous in favor. Based on what I am seeing on the town link, based on our agenda, you link to the town website. The documents that are linked out there at this point are no different than what we saw on July.
We cannot discuss that aspect of it. We, when we get to the application, we will discuss that.
Okay, that's fair. I just, I noted that and I noted the documents and I noted the discrepancy and I wanted to put it into comment. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you. Any other public comments about things that are not on the agenda?
Can I address my question with now or?
Okay.
That'd be good. So it's about going back to Raymond Akers, which was approved in two parts on the 9th and the 23rd. The shore land permit, as the board will recall, had many contingencies, which we have met almost all of them. We have approval from the DEP, we have the DE permits, the landscape plan has been updated and improved both by Ted and the DEP. We've got the deeds drafted and approved or submitted to the title company. But, and there's a landscape contractor identified to do the planting. The one request that the applicant would have at this point is to make the performance, essentially performance of the landscape plan, a contingency for occupancy as opposed to posting an additional $12,000 surety. So we wanted to make that request. We do have a landscaper lined up that could be done. It, it will be done in short order. But again, with the financing still yet to be released based on the, the status. That was a request that Mr. Raymond wanted to bring to the board's attention. And I think Ted had emailed earlier this week saying that that was really a decision for the board as opposed to Ted. The, the findings of fact say that Town Planner and DEP or Town Planner shall approve the performance assurance. So we had addressed that question with him, but now we're addressing it with the board.
Well, just as a clarification, that was on the, the actual mechanism of it, what the, what the nature of that would be, not necessarily whether or not the Town Planner had the right to be able to override the Planning Board and their decision. So that was really the, the, the type of mechanism, whether it be an LLC or an escrow or something else. So I just want to clarify that. It's up to the board, what you want to do.
Let's find out how the board feels about that. Does, does, does the board have any thoughts on that? My thoughts on it, since nobody else is going to say, I mean, my thoughts on it are that the performance bond is part of the findings of fact that we voted on and we approved. Therefore, it should be in play and he should come up with the $12,000. Work it out, be it a line of credit or be it cash and work it out with the Town Planner as to what kind of mechanism is involved. I don't want to have to go through the process of changing the findings of fact. I think it would be, it would just work out quicker for you to say, okay, we'll, we'll just, we'll do what we agreed to, which is to post the, the surety bond. Thoughts by anyone else?
I agree. I think, you know, we went out on a bit of a limb with that whole project and the, and the change. And understanding that, you know, some circumstances that were, you know, contributed to it that weren't really as part of the applicant's control, but I think, given the nature of things and the sensitivity of the area and the importance of landscaping, that, that should be upfront.
I think I would concur with Jamie's remarks. Right on the mark.
Okay, thank you. I just, again, I wanted to bring it to the board's attention. I appreciate you being receptive to that question.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments by anyone? Hearing none, we will move on to pending applications. 35 DMR Drive, Plenary Site Plan Review. The proposal to construct a 4,251 square foot metal building complementing an existing 3,440 square foot commercial building on a 2.83 acre site located at 35 DMR Drive, Tax Map 1 Lot 1D in the BI District. Gary Martin is the owner applicant and Amy McNally Esquire is the applicant's agent. If I remember where we left this, we were looking for the, I keep wanting to call it a covenant and it's not. Road maintenance agreement?
No, we had decided, several meetings ago, we had, the board had accepted our proposal to quit claim deed that crescent parcel of part of the roadway that encroached on Mr. Martin's property. That deed is drafted, prepared, surveyed. It's ready to be recorded whenever it's appropriate. My understanding after last meeting is that the town received a peer review, which raised some additional issues. And then we were given a time period by which to submit additional materials, which we have submitted. An amended plan to the planner, which addresses those concerns as well as additional information from our engineer addressing some of the erosion control and plan issues. And my understanding is that the planner has reviewed those and those are acceptable at this point.
Okay. Yeah, according, based on the notes that, that we had, there was the issue of the stockade fence going across the back end. How was that addressed? Not the back end, that side piece.
Oh, there's going to be a, a, a short fence buffering where any tree cutting is going on along that roadside, that's correct. So there'll be a fence and that's noted on the plan.
Okay.
Yep.
To the Chair?
Yes.
I believe that the applicant has met all of the conditions.
Okay.
That we required at the last meeting and that's why I presented with the findings of fact for tonight.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to check site work. And over here, I have the findings of fact. Does, does anyone on the board have any questions for Ms. McNally? Okay.
To the Chair, one more of the findings of fact sent.
I'm sorry, Marty?
When were the findings of facts sent so that we can read along with them?
They were sent, they were sent today at 5:02 PM.
Okay, that's why I'm just opening it up now.
Okay.
And I thought I only got. Attachment, Marty.
Okay, for the town of Arundel, the Arundel Planning Board, findings of fact and notice of decision, Gary Martin Builders Building Expansion. Whereas on February 27th, 2020, the Arundel Planning Board received a Plenary Site Plan application from Gary Martin Builders to construct a 4,251 square foot metal building complementing an existing 3,440 square foot commercial building on a 2.83 acre site located at 35 DMR Drive, Tax Map 1 Lot 1D in the BI District. Whereas the Planning Board concluded that the encroachment of DMR Drive on the applicant's property compromised the integrity of the road as a private way and should be corrected before declaring the application complete. Whereas given the COVID-19 quarantine restrictions on April 20th, 2020, the planner conducted a site walk on behalf of the Planning Board. Whereas on June 25th, 2020, the applicant had completed resolution of the DMR Drive encroachment issues and the Planning Board deemed the application complete. Whereas on July 9th, 2020, the Planning Board conducted a public hearing in conformance with Land Use Ordinance Section 929. The town engineer had submitted his peer review of the project and identified several outstanding issues that required resolution. Whereas on August 13th, 2020, the applicant provided amendments to the site plan that resolved all the outstanding issues regarding the proposed project. And whereas the Arundel Planning Board has determined the following findings of fact and notice of decision. Findings of fact, number one, the owner of the property is Gary Martin. Number two, the property is located at 35 DMR Drive, Tax Map 1 Lot 1D in the BI District. Number three, the property currently contains an existing 3,440 square foot commercial building on a 2.83 acre site used to house equipment and offices associated with the operation of a construction company named Gary E. Martin Builders. The site contains an expansive gravel yard approximately 47,317 square feet in area and a 2,600 square foot paved parking area containing four identified parking spaces. Other construction equipment is located on the site and the site has been used for seasonal boat storage. Number four, survey of the property has revealed that the travelway of DMR Drive has encroached into, into the lot 1D. To resolve the problem of building setback and the integrity of DMR Drive as a legal private way, the applicant has elected to convey the encroachment area of approximately 2,284 feet to the abutter at map 1 Lot 1F. Arundel cell storage. Number five, the applicant proposes to construct a second 4,251 square foot metal building located in the northern end of the property near DMR Drive containing two separate rental spaces, each containing a separate toilet facility, large garage area and a small office area. Number six, a paved apron is proposed around the southern and eastern perimeter of the new parking structure, providing 10 parking spaces and, and an entry pad for the large interior garage areas. Number seven, the new structure will be serviced by, by building a new septic system. The HHE 200 for the facility has been submitted to the Planning Board. Potable water to the new building will be provided by a service line tap into the existing water main in DMR Drive owned by Kennybunk Kennybunk Port and Wells Water District. Overhead electrical service will be provided from the existing pole line on DMR Drive via a 15-foot cut in the existing tree line. Number eight, five RAB 26 with shielded downlights shall provide security lighting on the west, south and east side of the new building. Number nine, the proposed site development meets all the dimensional standards of the BI District. Number 10, stormwater runoff from the new building parking lots and other impervious surfaces are, are graded discharge into the existing wetland area located on the eastern perimeter of Lot 1D. Stormwater analysis prepared by Walsh Engineering Consultants and dated July 23rd, 2019 indicates that there will be no additional peak runoff generated by the new structure and associated parking. A peer review conducted by Atlantic Resource Consultants dated June 24th, 2020 confirms the engineer's conclusions. Number 11, a soil erosion control plan prepared by Walsh Engineering Consultants and dated July 2020 specifies a stump grinding erosion control berm to be installed along the northern and eastern perimeter of the new building site prior to construction. Specifications for looming and seeding disturbed areas and sedimentation prevention maintenance schedules to be observed in the construction process. Number 12, the applicant has specified a 15-foot wide, eight-foot high stockade fence to be installed in the 15-foot tree line cut along the property line with DMR Drive to meet the buffering requirements of the land use ordinance. Number 13, the revised site plan delineates the location of all existing tree stands and specifies that there shall be no clearing of these existing buffers, buffer areas except for the designated 15-foot electrical service corridor without the Planning Board's approval. Number 14, record plans indicate revised site plans prepared by Lower Village Survey Company and dated July 22nd, 2020 and soil erosion plan details sheets and post-development stormwater plan prepared by Walsh Engineering Consultants dated 7/23/19 and July 2020. Conformance with conditional use criteria. After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the application to be in conformance with the criteria of Section 10 6 4 of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance as follows. The proposed project conforms to all standards of the zoning district and meets performance standards specified in Sections 5, 9, and 10 of this ordinance. Number two, the proposed project pre-exists a threshold date for a DEP stormwater permit and therefore the applicant is not subject to any federal and state permits. Number three, the proposed project does not unnecessarily impact public safety and fire protection and will not create a financial burden for the town of Arundel in the provision of emergency services and law enforcement to the project site and neighborhood. The fire chief has determined that the applicant's project is in conformance with Land Use Ordinance Section 5 7 Fire Protection. Number four, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon the quality of surface or groundwater resources in the applicant's project will provide adequate septic facilities that will not present a threat to the groundwater quality. Number five, the proposed project provides adequate stormwater management facilities to produce no additional peak runoff from the site during the 25-year storm event and will not have an undue impact on municipal stormwater facilities or downstream properties. Number six, the proposed project has adequate site distance from DMR Drive and DMR Drive maintains adequate site distances on Portland Road and therefore will not have an adverse onsite and offsite impact upon existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems within the community or neighborhood. Number seven, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, habitats, marine resources, important cultural resources or visual quality of the neighborhoods surrounding environments of the community. Number eight, the proposed project will not produce noise, odor, dust, debris, glare, solar obstruction or other nuisances that will adversely impact the quality of life of surrounding parcels. Number nine, the proposed project will have a positive fiscal impact on municipal government. Therefore, be it resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the Plenary Site Plan application from Gary Martin Builders to construct a 4,251 square foot metal building complementing an existing 3,440 square foot commercial building on a 2.83 acre site located at 35 DMR Drive, Tax Map 1 Lot 1D in the BI District, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall provide to the Town Planner a deed registered in the York County Registry of Deeds conveying the 2,284 square foot strip encroachment of DMR Drive to the owner of map 1 Lot 1F. Number two, the buffering stockade fence in the 15-foot electrical corridor shall be maintained in good working condition for as long as the facility operates. Similarly, all existing tree stands identified on the record site shall be retained and no cutting shall occur without the approval of the code enforcement officer. Number three, prior to construction, the applicant will submit a surety in the amount of $11,000 in conformance with Land Use Ordinance Section 10 7 2 for all approved site construction activities. Number four, the applicant acknowledges that at any time the need for more than 15 parking spaces is established on the property, the existing gravel portion of the lot as well as the driveway from DMR Drive shall be paved in accordance with Land Use Ordinance Section 5 12 2 2. Number five, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall reimburse the town of Arundel the cost of the peer review provided by Atlantic Resource Consultants. Number six, no certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the code enforcement officer receives certification from the design engineer and a written statement from the Town Planner that all improvements mandated by this permit have been installed in accordance with the record drawing. Number seven, in compliance with Land Use Ordinance Section 10 9, this permit shall expire in the event that construction does not commence within one year of the approval date and if the project is not substantially completed within two years of the approval date. So approved by the, the Arundel Planning Board this 13th day of August, 2020. I now need a motion.
Yay.
Okay, we'll give it to, give this one to Roger and Marty made the second. Is there any discussion by the board?
I had a very quick question. I think it's more just clarification on finding number two. I presume what Ted, you were, you were going for is that the bulk of the project predated the stormwater law? And that the, I, I assume the new improvements don't meet the threshold. Is that correct? You're on mute.
That's correct, Jamie. In fact, the designing, the, our peer review, engineer review that and that there, that there was no real change in the impervious surface created at this point.
So, so, okay, so the, the building is being constructed on an existing impervious surface?
Exactly.
Okay, all right.
It's, it's gravel, you know, the, the curbing up was or near the same.
Oh, yeah. No, I just, I, yep, couldn't remember that detail.
Yep.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Motion was made and seconded. Marty?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jens?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Susan? It is unanimous. Congratulations, Amy.
Thank you.
Maybe I'll get you, I'll, I'll get you a invoice from Atlantic Resource when I get one.
Oh, fair enough.
I was beating them up today, saying, where's my invoice?
I figured that was the vague language in the findings, but we can.
For the Planning Board, I will send the findings of fact out and notice of decision out for your signature through DocuSign later on this evening.
Great.
The next item on the agenda. The Wellness Center, Plenary Site Plan Review, Determination of Completeness. A proposal to expand an existing parking lot serving two commercial structures by approximately 5,100 plus or minus square feet at 1,009 and 1,005 Portland Road on a 4.18 acre parcel tax map, 43 lots, 52 and 52A in the DB1 and the RP districts. Elizabeth Boucher is the applicant, is the owner and applicant. Oh, there, there you are.
You're on mute.
You're on mute? Ah, thank you.
Yeah.
Hello.
I thought I had seen you and I'm thinking, people keep moving around.
I saw that.
People go away, everybody shifts. I think from, from what I understand, there is an issue with the, the, the two handy, the two spaces, one where the handicap spaces that you guys were going to put in. There, there doesn't appear to be any way for them to turn around. They would have to back out onto Route 1? Yeah, so that was, so that was moved to the front of the parking lot. Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
And all the changes that he had asked for.
Okay. And is there anything else, Ted, that we need to know about?
I, I didn't hear any of that. I lost.
The handicap space where we were looking at having to back up onto Route 1?
Wasn't a handicap space, the two parking spaces.
The two parking spaces, they've been moved.
Handicap space that's, that's behind the existing building. They moved everything to within 75 feet of both buildings, exactly as they said they want.
Okay.
There, there, the handicap is all set. I think the only real issue was, was backing up into Route 1. That's, that's one thing that our ordinance doesn't allow. With the two spaces there, you can't maneuver. I mean, before, when you had one space, you can maneuver a car around and drive out, but with two spaces, you don't have maneuvering room to back out unless, unless there's something on the plan I don't see. And that's the only real issue that, with the parking that, that I saw.
Well, that's, that's existing.
We're, we're not touching that side of the building. We're not touching it. We're just redoing exactly what's there. We're not widening it or touching it.
Okay.
We are literally putting new pavement down. That's it, where it already is.
Do you need that parking there for, for, for meeting any, any parking space requirements? Or is it just a dish parking?
No, that's just existing, so we're, we're having it repaved because it was, it was torn up. There's some of it left, but a lot of it was taken up.
So it was like there, there isn't any need then for, or there shouldn't be any expectation that whatever would be parking on the southerly side of the building would ever need to back onto Route 1 because I, I think the prospect of that is scary.
We're just repaving exactly what's there right now, Jens. It's, we're not widening or anything, and there's one individual that parks over there, and she has no problem turning around and pulling out straight. No problem at all. And they're, all we're doing is repaving what's there. We're not touching anything or adding anything.
Okay, so she, she hasn't been backing out onto the Route 1. She hasn't needed to, and there isn't any, anybody's gonna have to do that.
She's been there over a year, and she's had, there's not been one complaint from her about that issue because she hasn't really, she just turns it around and pulls out.
Okay, yeah, that's good. Because I know from where I am, people consider this strip from Ross Road down to where Old Post cuts off as the, you know, the opening link in a drag strip.
I hear ya. I, I hear ya.
Hear them, yeah.
It echoes over the water.
I'm not sure that area on the southerly side of the house is even part of this application for expansion of the parking lot. Also, we, you know, we really focused on the expansion of the parking lot between the two properties, and that, that area over there is kind of a phase two anyway.
Hmm. I think there, there was a time when you were proposing to put the handicap in that area, and I think that drew, drew our attention there, but now that you're leaving alone, I think it probably would have been better we didn't, you, you didn't have it in the first place, but I think, I'd, I'd say that should not be part of the plan, just adding on, on the northern side.
Yep. I agree.
But that was the intent. When we went out and did the sidewalk, there was talk about putting a ramp, putting the handicap space there and then running a ramp down off that, that little set of stairs that goes up so that somebody in a wheelchair could get up into the property.
Yeah, the reason, the reason we were thinking that is because it was, there was an existing ramp there when we, when we bought the property, so we thought it'd be, you know, just smart to put it back there, but then we decided to move the space out front.
Well, I think that will resolve the problem because I, at the sidewalk, I was under the impression that there were going to be two parking spaces there, and with two spaces, there's no place to turn around.
Yeah, I think the new plan shows the new configuration pursuant to our discussion.
Yeah, okay. I'll, I'll have to look at it again.
Through the chair?
Yes, Doc, yeah.
Well, if that's the case, then we should have one of those parking spaces removed from the official plan and just have it labeled as an existing, non-conforming parking space so that it, it's, it's taken off the list and we don't have, make that assumption that we're, we aren't put in a position where we're authorizing something that, that's violation of our ordinance. It's an existing condition.
But if you, if you pave it, aren't you changing it?
It's, it's been paved before. I mean, I, I, I look back in some of the historical Google map, Google Earth maps, and it's been paved before. At least it's been compacted. It was, it's, it's been a broad, well-defined area. I think it's, it's gone. I think it's, it's deteriorated in the interim between when the Bushers took over and, and when those photographs were taken.
But even at that, you could, you could tell from standing out there that it had been paved. It may, I don't, it didn't look like it had been paved all the way back through, but coming off the road.
Wants to consider paving it to be more or less codification of it as two parking spaces, and I would say make it one identified as one parking, parking space.
Yeah, especially if you're gonna move it.
We're just gonna line it.
We're just gonna line it.
But he's talking about on the plan.
Oh, okay.
Shows it on the plan.
Oh, okay.
I'm talking about the plan.
Yeah, got it. Got it.
So that, yeah, when we bought the place, the, the pavement went all the way up to the garage door.
Yep.
That was there, and then they, they took out probably 10 feet of it to do the foundation when we tore the old barn down.
Okay.
But there's still a substantial amount there that we'd like to keep because the, the tenant upstairs uses that for her parking.
And, and I don't think it would be a problem as long as it was, it's one space. If you make it two spaces, it's gonna be, it, it creates an issue.
Okay, so should we just eliminate those two spaces altogether?
No, I'd leave one space.
I'd leave, yeah, leave one.
Okay.
Because you're gonna have somebody parking over there, so leave the one space. And that, that would resolve the issue. We wouldn't have to worry about somebody thinking, wow, I'm gonna have to back, back out onto Route 1. They would only do it one time. Does the planning board have anything else for the applicant?
Did, the only thing I did bring up was the stormwater management plan. We didn't get any numbers on that, but we did get a, did get a cut sheet of a, a level spreader in there. And that's, that's about it. The, we also received a slope stabilization and soil erosion control narrative rather than the plan, but it was a narrative. We don't have any grading shown on the, the swell that's feeding the level spreader. However, there is a reference to an existing berm on the site, which is not shown on the site plan. How's the board want to deal with that?
Which berm is that, Ted?
It's on the plane. It just says existing berm. It says, follow the existing berm. Let me say exactly what the engineer said.
There is a drawing, there is a drawing right next to parking space number 16. That would be the existing level spreader that was probably.
No, I see it. Actually, it's in front of 18 and 20. It's 18 through 20. He shows it, but the runoff, the way it's showing is the runoff is gonna grade down basically over a 16, and, and then it's going to go follow a berm. It says direction of stormwater runoff, use existing berm to direct stormwater to level lip spreader, transition to the level spreader. It shows an arrow going to it, but I, it doesn't really mark it, just says there is a berm there, so. I guess it's up to the planning board whether or not they feel that's adequate under the circumstances. I mean, we did go out and see it. There is enough area to do the level spreader. You can't do anything down below. So was this adequate for the planning board's purposes?
Can I ask you something about that? My recollection is, is that the grasses that lie below there are really thick.
Yep, true. Yes.
Okay. So wouldn't that have a tendency, Ted, to significantly ameliorate any kind of drainage problem?
Yeah. Yeah, it's just we wanna, the, the issue of the level spreader was to make sure that the runoff was, was applied as a sheet over that area and not, and didn't get into a gulling, railing situation that might occur otherwise. So the issue was just to make sure that the water got to the level spreader, and the level spreader was big enough to handle the amount of runoff that's gonna be coming off and, off of the driveway or off the parking area. That was the only issue.
We, we did discuss that drainage area in pretty good detail at one of the previous meetings, and, you know, the, the applicant's intent was to go right back to the engineer and say, you know, can you show, show a basic drainage plan with spreader? And, you know, I think that's what the applicant was going for with that, with that update to the plan. And on Jens's point, it is, the grass is pretty thick back there even despite being bush hogged, you know, once or twice a summer, so. I think it had been fairly recently bush hogged prior to the site plan, otherwise that field would be, you know, above shoulder height grass.
I thought you were gonna put the goats in there.
So Ted, I have a question. I assume from this discussion, we want the berm to stay?
Yes, no.
And so.
Maintain the berm, existing berm, diversionary.
So if you don't think it's sufficiently called out on the plan, can we just include some photographs so that we can establish what the existing is, and in the event that there's a change, we have a record, but otherwise it sort of streamlines the process?
Well, the other thing you can do is require that engineer to certify that the, that the construction of that berm and the level spreader, it's the requirements of the, the location.
That might be the easier way to do it.
Either one works for me or even both, but I, I think it's easily resolved.
Yeah, normally.
Record.
Normally, I would, I would insist that the engineer actually designed the facility, but given that we've seen that facility out there, given the fact that it's in a floodplain, given the amount of surface cover on it, assuming the applicant does not remove all this surface cover, and that, that we could make it, we put it on the engineer to certify that it has been constructed to meet the standard and meet the drainage requirements of that particular site.
That should be easy enough, don't you think?
Yeah. If this is, that's sufficient, then we'll have them inspect it and certify.
Yeah, I think so.
That's. Go ahead, Tom.
Would that be added as a condition to approval?
Yep.
Okay, so we wouldn't need to change the plan at all?
No.
Okay.
Also, Ted, in the, in the bottom paragraph, it says that this area was field verified by the design engineer and deemed adequate for proposed stormwater management. So I think what he was saying is what's there is adequate.
Well, yeah, I don't know what that meant, because we don't, he's saying.
I, well, I spoke with him, and he told me that what we have is adequate for the runoff, what's in place now.
And I think that was. Wait a minute, we're good. I can't hear. Everybody's talking over each other.
Uh, there was, there was, he, there was no discussion with him about constructing anything other than what was there, what is there now.
Well, he's, well, he's, he's put a level spreader in. That's, that's a, that's a serious piece of drainage. I mean, he's got it on the plan. He's got a level spreader, and he's got a construction detail of that with a diversion dike and the, the fabric, minimum length is 12, 12 feet out from the spreader itself, and he's specked out all the, all of the material that's supposed to go in, even the, even the, the minimum depth, the minimum length and the lip, and has also specified it to be 29 feet long. So it's pretty specific on the plan. So if that's on the plan, then that's what we'll build.
Yeah, so. I mean, are we not good then?
Adequate for proposed stormwater.
Yeah, I, I, I think what he's saying is that, that with that level spreader, it should be adequate. Says, great revised parking lot area to drain in this area, assure that all erosion controls are in place, assure that all erosion controls are in place prior to construction, stabilize discharge flow with level spreader, as detailed. He's got a detail down below. And, and he's got a length of 29 feet, which means that he thinks that that's adequate to carry the, the amount of runoff that you're gonna get in a 25-year storm there, and that, that what we would do is just have him certify that it's been constructed to his standard. I think that's the way we, we solve that problem, instead of having him grade it all out. Would you agree with that, Jamie?
I'd be fine with that. I mean, especially for this small amount of, of new impervious.
Yeah, we got a lot of.
Given that, given this specific length that he's put in for the level spreader, he's done some design work on it.
I think he has too.
So, you know, it's unfortunate that he didn't provide that with the, the application, but, you know, that's not a, that's not just a pretty standard dimension.
No, it isn't. Might be drafting area, might be 30 feet, but it, it scales out at 29 feet. It's, it's, it's somewhere in there. He had that length for a reason, so he probably did some quick calculations. But I just, I just don't have the documentation on it. Rather than hold it up, and the board has two, two, two courses of action. You can either ask him to supply that or just go with it and say that in, in the finest of fact, or, you know, assuming the board does approve it, that he certified that it's been built to standards that he designed.
Hey, we go with that, that second option, just do it as fine as a fact at this.
Yep.
This.
Yeah, I'd go along with that.
Okay.
Yay.
Okay. Is, is there, other than that, the application is complete, is it not, Ted?
Yeah, I would say so. I, I would say the application's complete and should, should go to public hearing.
We, we need a motion to determine completeness?
So move?
Susan made the move. Jens, was that your second?
Yes.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Marty?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Jens?
Aye.
It is unanimous. The application is complete. We now need a public hearing on the 27th.
Yep. We'll make a motion. We have a public hearing on the 27th.
Second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roger made the motion. Tom seconded it. Any discussion? Hearing none. Marty?
Yay.
Tom?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Jens?
Aye.
It is unanimous. We will see you on the 27th for a public hearing.
Through the chair.
Yeah, Marty?
This will be another Zoom meeting, correct?
It will be the same Zoom meeting on the 27th at 7 o'clock. We are in a Zoom meeting with the Kennybunk Water Conservation.
River, River Study Commission, Committee.
The Kennybunk River Study Commission. For about an hour, we will stay in the meeting and can, and continue on with the planning board. This is, the, the, the River Commission is, is hosting that particular meeting, so you should all have gotten an email on it, follow up on it, and register so that they will send you the link. So that link that I sent out two weeks ago is not valid.
I thought they were gonna automatically include the planning board on it.
They don't have your, they don't have the information to send you the link with.
What I'm saying is through our channels so that they, we would be invited that way.
Well, you, you, you are. Uh, you, you, you are. We are invited. We just have to register.
You just have to register. They need to register because they have, have to report to the, this is a federal grant. So they have to report who came and what, what affiliation they are. Because that's part of the stakeholder group. The plan was clearly is one of the big stakeholder groups, groups because you're gonna have to determine what policy we're gonna have to do to deal with some of the issues that have been raised by the, uh, study. And selectmen are gonna be involved. ACT has already shown a great deal of interest. They actually only wanted about 10 of us, but I told them, forget it. You're in Arundel. There's gonna be a lot of people who are gonna want to participate, find out what's going on. And so I said, we're gonna start with the planning board and we're gonna have the same night as the planning board to make sure that we have the planning board involved because they're gonna be the ones who have to make all the, they're gonna be the ones who have to make a lot of the land use decisions. That whatever comes out in phase one and phase two of this project, this project is not going away. This will probably involve the feds, so.
Then we sign on to the, uh, to the, to their meeting and just stay on after they finish?
That is correct.
But make sure you register first. Make sure you register first.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good, good. And then just sign on to their meeting and they said they'll just, they'll just keep recording. Rich is a designated co-host on this. So he is gonna record too, I believe.
Yes, I'm gonna record. I'm gonna record the entire meeting so that we have not only their portion, but we will then have the planning board's portion afterward.
Right. Right.
And for the guilds, if you guys want to sign on for it, by all means, sign up. The more, I think the more people that know about it and are involved in it, the better.
It said to unmute so I could understand where, so I could speak. We definitely would look into it. Sure, thank you, Rich.
Okay. I'll, I'll send you, uh, the information that I have on it.
That'd be awesome. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, make a motion. We hold a public hearing on the 27th.
We already did that.
We already did that.
Oh, okay.
Well, that, that's why I have that confused look on my face. And we voted on it. So we, we are good to go. We'll look forward to seeing you on the 27th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You have a good evening.
You too. Thanks.
Item number three. PaveTech major conditional use application determination of completeness. I'm not gonna bother reading it. Because as Stacy started to point out at the beginning of the meeting, the only change that was made to the plan was to take it from saying it was a contractor yard two to saying it was a contractor yard one. Everything else stayed the same. It is not complete. He is not a contractor yard. He cannot have a contractor yard one in his current location.
Well, contractor, Mr. Chairman, contractor yard one, paving operations cannot be contractor yard one's operations. They're automatically contractor yard two operations.
So the permit that he has currently was issued by the Board of Selectmen for a home occupation.
Oh.
Which was obtained through a consent decree more than 10 years ago.
Twenty.
Planning, planning board gave them a, a permit in 2003 as a home occupation only. And that was after the fact.
So he, he was, Mr. Stillson was notified by both Ted and myself that his, the application was not complete. His, uh, his available choices were to either ask us to table it or to withdraw the application completely. He has done neither. I would like to table this indefinitely until, until I, either a six month period of time has gone by, in which case it will die a natural death, or he will bring us an application that has been complete.
Can I speak?
Uh, the chair?
Yes.
I, I have a question.
At about 4:30 this afternoon or 5:00, somewhere in there, I received a box of, uh, of, uh, of plans, uh, from it, from their consultant. Who, um, and they, they, it basically, it's another new set of maps from PaveTech. I haven't had a chance to look at them, so I have no idea what they say, uh, what's on them. Um, and they, this time they actually did send a, a PDF. Because last time they didn't send me a PDF. And this time I have a, and I have no way of, of doing a PDF. I'm not gonna spend the money to take it to, you know, print it. So, uh, at this situation, they have an application. I will look at it and go over it with you, Mr. Chairman, to determine whether or not it's, it's complete enough to even be entertained on the 27th.
Okay.
I, I, I have a question, if I may. It's a rhetorical question.
Ah.
And why are we here?
I'm sorry.
Why are we here?
My point is, is why was it on, why was it, um, listed as up for debate today if there's no new documents? And they haven't been presented and they're not on the website?
Because it was posted. We had, we had told him at the last meeting to get it back to us and that we would put it on this agenda. He got it back to us. But it.
By the 30th, Rich, and today's 13th.
No, he did get us, if I may, he did get us, uh, the application by the 30th. I have a time date on that. When I, I, I came back and I saw it on Monday, I reviewed it and determined that it was inadequate and that it was non-conforming, even more not, just as non-conforming. And, uh, I believe the chairman, you put it on just basically to tell them that, that this is tabled again until such time that they provide a full application or else to give a plan or opportunity to make another.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
I put it on the agenda so that tonight we, we could explain to him, not only is the application incomplete, it will not make it back on the agenda until the town planner determines that it actually is complete.
But you note he's not here.
Yes, we did notice that, but he.
We shouldn't even be discussing this since he's not here.
Okay. I, I, we got the answer and, um, thank you.
Okay. Jens, you were saying?
Yeah, it, I just commented, I think we're, this is equus mortis.
Yes.
Walking a dead horse here. Like, we should just move on.
Yeah, we're gonna.
Okay.
But that, that takes care of that issue. Next on the agenda is the land use.
All right, thank you all. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, guys.
This is a discussion to establish a uniform construction and dimensional standards for commercial driveways in section 5.2. What do you think, Ted?
I think I gotta have some time to be able to write some of this stuff. And we're having four planning board meetings in a row, you know?
Gee. Why don't we just put this out there far enough, uh, for you, to allow you to do that? This thing keeps popping up like lawn mushrooms.
I know. I think Rich really wants to push me hard on this one and I, I know Susan's got one. She's, she wants to get going to her. And I've been pushing Jim on that one as well, uh, because I need Jim's input on that. I think we've got a resolution to an issue that came up last time. But yeah, I, I need a little bit of time to be able to do some of this stuff.
Yeah, we, we just spent a month or two months.
To the chair.
I don't have a problem with that. My, my biggest problem is that I just want to get it done.
I do too, but I gotta have a little bit of time to do it.
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Why don't we take Susan's? That's gonna be the easiest one first. Get that one over and done with, then we can work on the other. So why don't we just table this, that one for now until we can get to it?
Well, we'll, we'll table it until, until Ted can get the paperwork put together. We'll just leave it out there.
So, um, Rich, uh, I have, um, after reviewing all the Stillson information and, uh, beginning to understand fully how his home occupation has changed or is very different than the definition of a home occupation that we sorted out last year. I think we should consider some way to, codify what happens to home occupations, for instance, when they grow too large and no longer conform with current guidelines, um, when those home occupations are transferred or sold. Do they go with the land? Does the new applicant have to reapply for the home application? Uh, you know, uh, approval and it was my understanding that right now it currently runs with the land. Ted, is that correct? So if you have a home occupation and you sell your house, does that home occupation automatically run with the land? Or does the new owner have to reapply for a permit?
This is the exact same business. If somebody were to buy that business, then that would go with the land.
But what happens if the business is no longer conforming to the new, you know, guidelines for like a home occupation, for instance? So what we devised last year at the end of the year with home occupation, we spent a ton of time on it.
Yep.
Then, you know, the paving, you know, Bill Stillson's, and this, I, I don't mean to call just special attention to Bill Stillson, but what he got in 2003, he probably wouldn't get in 2020. Because it no longer conforms to our definition of what a home, real home occupation is. So I personally feel, um, that if you have a home occupation and you're selling it as a part of your wholesale of your property, that the new owner has to reapply for that designation.
No, no.
Yeah, it's my, it's my understanding of, of the way that that works is if, if you have, oh, Acme Energy Company as a home occupation and you sell your house and Acme Energy goes with the house, then whoever takes over the, the business can run it without doing, without making any changes or without having to come to us. But if he decided that instead of having Acme, uh, Energy, he wanted to do Acme Used Cars, he would have to come back to the planning board and get a permit for it because it's a change of use.
I understand. I, and, and not that Maine is New Hampshire or New Hampshire is Maine, but in an attempt to kind of clean things up and get them sort of uh, more in conformance, uh, with new guidelines that home occupations don't necessarily run with the land. And you don't automatically have a presumption that that business is going to be able to be maintained in that location. And it's only grandfathered, for instance, or the person who happens to own the property. And once that property is sold, that grandfather designation goes away. And the new owner has to reapply. And to me, that makes sense because otherwise, you know, change is stymied. And, and I don't think it should be because as these communities change, we have to have a, an ability to allow them to do so without too much onus on, on the community and on the board. So anyway, that's just my thought.
Here's my thought. Home occupation is grandfathered. If you're doing that, then all your grandfathers are gonna be thrown away.
No, when you sell the property, Marty, and you're no longer, you get to operate it and your children get to operate it, but when you sell it to an independent third party, then that grandfather, uh, goes away or it has to be reconsidered. I don't think that that's unfair. Otherwise, the grandfathers are written in stone and they never go away.
But can I just, just point out that, uh, I, I understand what you're saying, Susan, and I, I could be, uh, I could agree with you, but I think, um, I can't think of a single situation where grandfather juice was sold, the property was sold and someone else owns it now. I think it's such a, um, such a, an unusual situation that may happen. It, I don't know if it's worth putting too much effort into right now.
Okay, that's fair. I just think there are a lot of businesses in places that are grandfathered. I know that they exist in New Hampshire and I, I know they exist in Maine and in Arundel per se that, um, probably should move along. And, uh, and I understand current owners should be allowed to operate them as they exist, but new owners not necessarily.
From my observation, most of the.
Automatic presumption that it stays.
Most of the, um, home occupations that, that I know of, it's really the individual that, that, um, that it, that keeps it going. I don't know if, if it's, um, if it's more business. I, I think it's, it's just an organic growth that is hard to sell. I don't know if, if it's, um, a marketable thing. I don't know if anybody's looking to buy a house where they can also have a construction, uh, contract yet. Uh, I, I think it's, it's so unusual, maybe, but, um, I haven't seen it happen, Ted. I don't know if, if, if you know of any case where it's happened. No, I, I don't know of anybody selling a contracted yard. I, or, or let's say, uh, the only thing I could think would be like, i- i- if Pam Drew were to sell her llama farm to somebody else's llama farm and, and that's a home occupation there, although agriculture is allowed to a certain degree, but remember the number of animals she's got is greater than what we normally allow. And that was a, a pre-existing animal farm. Before that, the, the five animal unit came in, if you recall. So, um, uh, the only other one I can think of is like, uh, Houston and Company. But I don't think that was a home occupation. I don't think Houston and Company was ever a home occupation.
And so what's their designation? I don't remember.
Was that a home occupation initially?
Yes, because when he lived down there, he ran his business out of his house.
Okay, and then eventually the, the home part disappeared, right?
And the house became the showroom.
Yeah, because there's, he doesn't live there.
Which place?
He doesn't live on, on, on Log Cabin Road.
He doesn't, no, Log Cabin, I'm not speaking of Log Cabin Road.
Which one are you talking about?
Where Sean Dooson lives.
I didn't say Dooson. It's in Houston.
Houston.
Oh, Houston. You sound like you said Dooson.
No, I'm sorry. No, no, Sean, well, Sean's in a, in a, in a commercial.
It's a different business.
Yeah, it's totally different.
So I don't really mean to beat a dead horse, but I, I mean, I think we should think about these things as time moves along. As we, as we want to sort of control better how a Rundle develops. Um, and I know we want to keep its rural character and we wanted to have this, that, and the other thing. But, you know, things are changing and we should think about all of these things and let the new and the old coexist as, you know, best they can.
But I, I think that that question becomes one. I'm not sure how that process works in Arundel right now. If it goes with the owner or if it goes with the property. And I'm also not sure what the law has to say about it.
Me, me neither. I just, it's just part of a whole way of approaching development.
If, if I were looking at that in the first place, I would be, I, I would be, uh, prone to say, if you start, if you have a home occupation and you are running that home occupation, you're running the home occupation, not your children, and you are not a corporation. Which, which means that, uh, I could not have a business in my house because my business is incorporated and I have no problem with that.
I don't have any problem with that either.
Change the legal structure. You change the ownership.
Well, again, it's not, not anything that's gonna be decided tonight. I just, uh, we're, I just thought I'd just throw it out there. But I didn't mean to delay the end of the meeting or things.
Well, I, but I, I still don't know what, what is the position in Arundel on a home occupation? Does it, can you sell your house and have the new owner as, assume that permit?
I wouldn't say, yeah. If they continue that permit, yes, I would say that they do. I, I think Maine law, and Jens can correct me on this, but I believe that Maine law basically says if you haven't changed that business from what it is, you do have the right to sell that business. you do have the right to sell that business and that business can continue with that, that property. Because unlike New Hampshire, where I know you, New Hampshire, they do often make it, uh, assign it to the individual. My brother doesn't get any calls. That, uh, I think in Maine though, and Jens could correct me on this, I think in Maine, it does go with the property more than it does the individual. And given-
You know, Ted, I don't, um, I don't think I can correct you. I, I don't really know. But what I suspect is that the state laws, as far as permitting goes, probably doesn't really address that. I, Maine does, but I'm not aware that it would. I expect that the, uh, scope of the permit, at least scope in time and who it is, what it is benefiting, whether that's a person or the, or the land. If, I would expect that that should be in the, in the, uh, in the ordinance, if it was going to be anywhere. And-
That's a good point. I, it's just, and I, and you're right. I don't see it codified anywhere in the, in the statutes. I just, I've just run into it in cases before. I think there might be some case law about it. Uh, but you're right. I don't, I don't think there's anything in the, in the, in the statutes that, that, that states what, what Susan's saying. That it goes with the land or it goes with the, with the property. I think it's just, that's the way it's always been in the, in the course of upheld that. It goes with the property.
Well, so in New Hampshire, it was done so that light uses for the land were grouped, you know, sort of in the same area. And, you know, they developed, a lot of the areas in New Hampshire developed in much the way, same way Arundel has and other, you know, more rural communities. And it was New Hampshire, Rockingham County specifically. Um, it was their way of trying to move light businesses into, uh, out of resident, what had become residential areas and into more commercial areas and not allowing them necessarily automatically function one within the other. So, and maybe it doesn't work in Maine. I just, uh, I didn't think it was a bad thing there and, um, and I thought it might be beneficial here.
I, I think, I, I think you're-
It would strike me as odd if, if the right and authority to extend permits for the highly localized uses that we're discussing here would be something that the, the state would extend to the towns and then turn around and tell the towns about the lifespan of that. You know?
Yeah, the only thing I would say about that, Jens, would be having worked in both, both states before. I, I lived and worked in New Hampshire, in the Upper Valley, actually, for a while. I think the state has more of a hands-off attitude towards land use versus Maine.
It's a free and die state.
That's, I think that's a prerogative that given to towns. And I would think, oh, if it's not in our ordinance, then maybe we should think about adding it in the ordinance. So it's clear.
It's a very good point.
So anyway, just for the hell of it, I thought I'd throw it out there, but-
No, it's a good thing to bring up because, I mean, we do have, we can have problem situations with, with, and, and we should realize that when we talk about pay, to beat on them, but that, that wasn't your usual home occupation. That was a situation, quite frankly, where, um, the, uh, the code officer at the time gave a permit for that activity and then was corrected by the planning board. But the investments had already been made in, in the facility and the planning board felt somewhat obligated since the town gave permits that they had to somehow justify this. So they came up, there's no, there was no other mechanism but a home occupation. I mean, there, there was nothing, you couldn't say, well, this is a limited business. We didn't have contractors yards until what, 2014? I mean, this, this-
Until we made it up.
Who created it. We didn't have-
We created it and we created a problem.
That's right.
We gave everybody a year to come, to come in and get a, a contract for, yeah, a contractor to permit.
We've done that twice.
So it would be like, um, and again, you know, we can, I don't want to, you know, but say you wanted to have a dog kennel, for instance. You own property in the R1. And it really doesn't belong necessarily any longer in the R1. But you're there, you have been there, you own the property, you've owned the dog kennel, whatever. So you can operate it as long as possible. But that doesn't necessarily mean the, the district, the R1 districts wants to, that to be maintained in perpetuity if it keeps getting sold. Because it no longer is, is in sync or in step with what's going on in the rest of the district. And the only way that you make some of that change is to, um, make it harder to pass that occupation on to new owners.
I don't think it's a question of making it harder. I think it's a question of making it impossible. The permit goes with the individual and not somebody else.
Well, that, and that, but, right, if it, anyway. So those, we can think about it all and, uh, but I think it's worth thinking about.
To the chair, I got another question.
Yeah, Marty.
Since someone came around and mentioned something about animal husbandry tonight, anything has been ever developed about, uh, guidelines for animal husbandry? Because I know it's out of our hands and we've passed it along. Has anything been created or done?
No. No, if you're speaking specifically with a certain attorney who was going to spearhead that, I've heard nothing.
No, not an attorney. This wasn't an attorney.
Yeah, it was.
A specific- We all know who, who that attorney, he shall remain nameless.
Right, who had an attorney, if you, that I was talking to, you guys-
Well, most of us have an attorney, unfortunately.
Well, I was talking to the attorney who was representing him about how to proceed. And I have not heard anything since last year. And it was about this time last year that we, we went through this, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
Nothing's happened.
I'm just asking a question so that it was brought up in animal husbandry. So that is a sore subject. And if it's been poked at or non-poked at.
I don't know about you, Marty, but I'm sick of poking that bear with a spoon. Um, I want, I, I think we've gotten, we've been maimed three times on this. I'm not up for a fourth.
I agree with you a hundred percent. What, anything, next question. What's the status on Campground Road?
Uh, I took a look and I reported it to Jim and asked him to investigate. There's no permits that we have. We have no permits for that activity.
It has been thin pretty good.
It's been clear cut. Completely clear cut. It's actually also been stumped. It's been, uh, the stumps are all out.
Which one are we talking about?
Uh, this is the one across from, uh, Crossroads. Uh, it, it's, uh, do you know Norman Debbs' Cludier's property? It's behind that. Yeah, the crossway over, you're on Campground Road. Campground Road, you know where Crossroads and Shitty Oaks are?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the, uh, mobile home parks. One's at 55 and one's just a, a regular mobile home park. It's across the street. So it's in that, that no man's land of Backwoods Lane and so forth, where you have 10-foot wide roads and, and so forth. Uh, it's back in that territory. So I have asked Jim to, uh, to, uh, act on, to investigate that. I've made it official, Marty, so.
Thank you.
I haven't seen him today. So we, I did take a look at it from the road and it is clear cut.
To the chair?
Yeah.
In the other business realm at this point?
Yes.
I had a couple of questions. First question is for Ted. I was thinking tonight, I was, as I read the findings of fact, I was wondering, um, who writes those?
I do.
You do?
Yes.
It strikes me, especially when there are lawyers involved, especially when there are lawyers involved, that, um, that's a huge expenditure of resources by the town that could be thrust upon applicants so that your function would be the less, the less, uh, time-consuming function of review and approval and editing.
I vote for that.
Yeah.
I mean, how many hats can Ted wear?
Well, so when we, when we are, typically, when you file a motion with the court and you want an approval, you want an order, a beneficial order, I don't care if you're in the bankruptcy court or federal district court or super court, district court, wherever you are, it's very typical, we submit one in advance. In fact, de rigueur a lot of times. Or you're going to be directed by the court to do it. It seems to me here, uh, the, 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 uh, towns don't have any better resource well than the courts do. And I, I don't, I wouldn't see a problem with doing this. After, after all, it does afford the applicant the opportunity to write things the way they want, obviously, has to be in conformity with what the expectations and legal requirements are. Uh, but that shouldn't be any problem when, certainly not when there are lawyers involved. And if, if there aren't lawyers involved for a particular applicant, well, still. If it's part of what's required, it's part of what's required.
And you think, think about some of our applicants we've had and imagine them writing-
I, I, I have. And you know what? Some of those applicants, some of those applicants would have done well to go out and hire counsel instead of coming back to us 15 times.
No argument, no argument there. No, see, we're considered to be a resource, not only to the planning board, but to the citizenry as well and to applicants. And that's the role that we have to play. So I get applications. I don't just sit there and review them. I actually have to sit down and help people get through the process. So I'm playing a multi, multi-faceted role in my position of being clear.
And our application fee is so low that it doesn't really provide any funding to assist the town in creating these documents when lawyers aren't involved. And maybe we should consider, um, augmenting the permit fee.
And that's something that, that we, the planning board could make a recommendation to the selectmen to do because the selectmen set the fees.
And that's, that's a good suggestion. But I think the better suggestion is simply not to have, not to have, you have to do the, the, the drafting, Ted, because that's going to free up a, a lot of your time.
I totally agree.
And I, and I appreciate that, Jens, but who's going to review that? I'm still going to have to review it. Isn't it better if I-
But the reviewing function is way easier, way easier. And, and editing. You, you could, you could give them sort of a bullet point, you know, succinct bullet point, uh, list of, look, these are the things you got to address in the findings if, if, if they need that kind of a guidance.
Well, why don't we, uh-
I think that would be the preferable, preferable thing than, than, than raising fees. Raising fees is going to raise eyebrows.
It always does. Right now, we're very low, by the way, on our fee schedule. But it's an interesting point. Let me chew on that a little bit for the next meeting. Think about how, how to do that. I mean, I, I don't want to sound like, oh, it's just easier if I do it, kind of thing. I don't, I don't want to, want to take that attitude. Anything that can free up a little bit of extra time would be appreciated. But, um, I, because I know that DEP tried that for a while, where DEP was letting applicants actually write the findings. And I don't think they do that anymore. Jamie, do you, well, Jamie, you haven't had to do a DEP application anytime recently, have you?
No, but you are correct. I remember when we, when I first started working up here, there was a lot of holdover from that mentality. And, but ultimately, it had gone by the wayside by the time I moved up. But there was still a lot of, you, you heard a lot of reference to that.
Yeah.
All right. I would, I would think that the ability to create a template would, would go a great distance. And, you know, here's basically what you have to do. You list out the, the different theories that have been had and you create a template and say to them, here, this is a starting point.
Yeah, it would have to be a really, really generic template. Pretty crazy, uh, submitted, but anyway, well, thanks for thinking about that. And the other question-
Give that some thought.
What do you colleagues think about, um, since we're doing this on Zoom for the foreseeable future and quite possibly, uh, and, and, you know, until after the new, new facility is ready, a, a different night than Thursday?
And with that?
I'm not opposed to an alternative.
Yeah.
Yeah. Want to compete with the selectmen?
No, I do, I don't care for a Monday.
Yeah, the only night that I would not be able to do it right now was a Wednesday. Other than that, yeah, my schedule's open. Monday, Tuesday, Friday.
Do you have a night in mind, Jens?
I'm sorry.
I was, well, I was thinking like, not Thursday or Friday, but-
Yeah.
Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday.
Yeah, yeah, I can't do Wednesdays myself.
So not Wednesday for Rich, not Wednesday for Ted. Tuesday, good question?
Tuesday's fine.
Tuesday's usually the car show. Hey, usually the Tuesday's the car show.
What car show, Marty?
Bentley's.
Oh, okay.
That's only for the, that's only for the summer.
Correct.
You like going to the car show?
I go to car, yes. Car show is, is, is a form of getting out, socializing.
True.
As much as we can do under these conditions. Because otherwise, we're all a little bit neck and cold.
I wish sometimes.
So is that it, guys?
Well, that's, I, I like that idea. It's, I, I think the idea of a different night, I don't know if it would improve anything, but I'm, I'm definitely willing to try it. But I think we'll probably have to wait until, well, at least September. Because we've got, everything else has been advertised and announced for the 27th.
Oh, yeah, but hey, how about if we did it like on a Monday night? Okay, but on the opposite night of the selectmen?
Well, remember, we have a lot of, we have Monday-long holidays many times.
Right.
True, good point, good point.
Yeah, Tuesday would probably be a good day.
Yeah, Ted, is that, is that something you can sort of sidebar, talk with Keith about?
I don't think Keith's got anything to say about it.
Okay.
It's the planning board that makes the decision. Am I wrong?
No, I don't think so.
No, I mean, no, I just didn't know if there was any, would be any underlying thought on things from other people in town.
I certainly would want to confer with the manager over this, but I, knowing Keith, I'm not sure he would really care. And, you know, when we get into the new digs, I mean, the great thing is we're going to have everything there and we're going to be able to set up before. And we can leave things up and not worry about what happens to them. And, you know, things can get, um, can get, um, pretty, pretty easily. And, uh, so maybe Tuesday would be good. The big thing is just acculturate our whole clientele, our, our whole, all our citizens, you know, with the fact that-
They'll, they'll acclimate to that easy. They're not, we don't have but a handful that are so used to showing up on a Thursday. I mean, also, I think from a practical standpoint, from your perspective, there are times when we decide that there's going to be a public hearing. And I know that you've said, well, I need, either need to go back tonight and get that in the works because you've got the day off on Friday. You know, otherwise the timeframe wouldn't be met. You know, the likelihood of that being the case, if we were to move it forward in the week, goes down, I think dramatically.
Yes, it does, it does.
How would it- How would it, how would that also work for about submissions? Would that give us any better time? I mean, uh-
It's still the 14-day submission.
Correct, but I'm just saying, instead of-
Well, the good, the good thing for them, for having worked, having, having worked in that side of the table, oh, great, now I have to work all through the weekend to get a submission in. That's what the consultants are going to be, awesome, Monday's going to be a-
That's not our problem.
You know, usually, Thursday, the weekend, like, week now.
You're right, Marty, that's not our issue.
That's not our problem, it's their problem.
Anything, also, anything about the back door for hidden metals?
I haven't heard nothing more.
Okay.
I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how much of a priority it is for Joe. I, I, I think Joe, I know, I was a bit surprised at the reaction of the homeowners. I thought that everybody was on board. I was led to believe that, and I think Joni was too. So she was a little surprised when, when some of the homeowners said, we haven't heard anything about this. So I think there's a little bit of damage control that Joe's going to do right now. He's very busy, I haven't talked to him directly in a while, quite a while.
Okay. Move to adjourn.
Motion's been made and seconded. Gentlemen, have a good evening.
Thank you, everybody.
You too.
Don't forget the next meeting on the 27th.
I should.
And I will, I will get the, the findings of fact out to you guys tonight so that they can get signed and on the way.
We have, if we could have one correction on that, Rich?
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there was something I noticed that I had boilerplate it incorrectly, and that would, it said conditions for conditional use, or, no, what is it? Where is that bloody thing? Man, it's right here. Findings of fact, it says conformance with conditional use criteria, it should be conformance with site plan criteria.
Okay.
Because it's actually a plenary site plan, so it should be site plan, that's the only thing. You have a Word document, so you could make that change, or do you want me to make that change and email it to you?
No, I, I have a Word document, so I can make that change, I just have to find out. Here, it is DMR. And that was?
Performance with, it's, it's the second heading, after findings of fact, says conformance with site plan criteria. It says performance with conditional use.
Oh, okay, so I'll change it to site plan criteria.
That's it. Okay.
Sounds like a plan.
All right.
All right. Good night, guys.
Good night.
Have a good weekend.
I will get this out to you probably on Monday, because you're not in tomorrow.
That's right.
And Keith was out today, so I'm going in to see him tomorrow.
He won't be there tomorrow.
He will be, believe it or not. Emily said he's going to be in tomorrow.
Really?
Yeah, I asked her about it, I said, no, no, he's, he's not in, tomorrow's Friday, you're closing, and she said, nope, Keith's going to be here. Okay, I'll go bother him tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Have a good night, five.
All right, take care, guys.
Bye. Good night.